WDEV News presents. The regular monthly meeting of the Fintress County Commission. The Fintress County Commission meets the third Monday of each month and you can see it live on Channel 12 Cable TV. It's a presentation of the Union Bank of Jamestown and Clark Range, your reliable banking partner since 1904.
For more than a century, Union Bank has been serving the people of Fintress County. Now, as we begin a new chapter in our history of service, we want to take this opportunity to reassure you that while our building may be new, we're still the same friendly people you have known for years. Union Bank, the same people, the same goals, and the same commitment to you. Union Bank, your locally owned hometown bank for more than a century, growing to meet your needs. Equ權 Land Member FDIC.
This Fintress County Board of Commission is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of the Flag by Lester Goody and our opening prayer by Jeff Green.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Father God in heaven, we come to you tonight, Father, thanking you for the opportunity to serve our county, to serve our state and our country. Father, I pray that the decisions that we make here tonight will be made in the best interest of the county, and I pray that all that we do will bring glory to you, ask these things in Christ's name, amen.
We have a roll call by Maryland State Department, our county court clerk.
Here.
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 We do have a forum. The next thing on the agenda is the approval of amendments from a regular commission meeting on February 19, 2018. Does everybody have a chance to look over the minutes? Any additions or subtractions? I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Four.
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 Motion passes. Next on the agenda is approval of notary applications. We have April Don Price, Gregory Lawrence Garrett, Amanda A Hicks, Lisa Ann Garrett, Monica M Brown, Millie Ray Beatty, and Carla Smith.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Four.
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 Ten-four-nine against, motion passes. Next thing on our agenda, real proud to have Ty Reagan here. He earned the prestigious rank of Eagle Scout. That's one of the rarest things that you could achieve in America today. So Ty, could we get you to come up with your family? And I see that's your scout leader. Come on up. Anybody else in the scouts with Ty? We've got a proclamation here and Kim Davison's going to read that.
Alrighty. "A proclamation of the Board of Commissioners of Fintress County in honor of Ty Reagan. Whereas Ty Reagan has earned the prestigious Eagle Scout rank on December 10, 2017. Whereas Ty is the first Eagle Scout from Fintress County in 11 years. Ty recently attended the 2017 Eagle Scout Recognition Banquet in Knoxville on March 2, 2018. His court of honor is scheduled for Friday, March 30, 2018. Whereas the rank of Eagle Scout may be earned by a Boy Scout who has been a life scout for at least six months, has earned a minimum of 21 merit badges, has demonstrated scout spirit, and has demonstrated leadership within his troop, team, crew, or ship. Additionally, he must plan, develop, and lead a service project, the Eagle Project, that demonstrates both leadership and commitment to duty. Whereas Ty's Eagle Scout project was completed this past summer. He chose to build a memorial swing at Brown Cemetery in memory of one of his friends that he lost in 2015. As part of his project, he also performed grass trimming and litter pickup at the cemetery. Whereas Ty is a senior at York Institute and involved in many activities. In athletics, he participates in track and field and cross-country as well as golf. He is a member of the Honor Society. He also scored a 33 on the ACT. He has been chosen as this year's Mr. YAI by the faculty of York Institute. Whereas Ty has signed with Alice Lloyd College in Pippa Passes, Kentucky and will be on their cross-country team. His plans are to become an orthodontist and to return to Fintress County to establish his practice. Now, therefore, Fintress County Executive's Office and the Fintress County Board of Commission formally express their congratulations to Ty Reagan for earning the prestigious award and setting an example of leadership and commitment to Fintress County proclaimed this 19th day of March, 2018."
They give me the blizzard award.
Next on the agenda, we have the Industrial Development Board's quarterly report. Scott Sandman, ID Board Manager.
Good evening, everybody. That's hard act to follow there. On the front of the report-
You're not put there, that's part of the agenda, I knew you couldn't.
I've got a summary of the RFP and RFI activity for the last four months. You can see we've been pretty busy, there've been a lot of projects coming through from the state and through the TVA. Of all these projects, we've been able to submit, I think, for two of them. What I've done is, what's in bold and underlined is sort of what disqualified our community for the projects. They're all looking for specific things. Some are rail service, some's high water usage, proximity to airports, proximity to certain types of schools. But this gives you a summary of what we've been doing as far as responding to potential investment. On the back of the report, sort of some of the highlights of activities the board's been involved with. We've gone through a process of updating our bylaws, moving our website and updating it. We've had a change in leadership. Mike Ledbetter, who's been our chairman, due to some other obligations stepped down, and Rob Andrews was our vice chairman and has assumed the roles of chairman for us. Brian Johnson is still our treasurer. We've had an update to the Clark Range Regional Business Park master plan. We completed or had the audit of the ID Board completed by CPA and submitted to the state. It's been accepted and approved by the state of Tennessee, comptroller's office. We've been working with Upper Cumberland Development District on some grants, but also they're working with us in Morgan, not Morgan, but Cumberland County on some new marketing efforts to promote both of our two counties as a good place to do business and that we're ready and have sites available for business. As you guys know, we received a site development grant last, I guess it was last summer now. We've finalized the plans for that, we've moved forward with the letting of the contract, and probably in the next 30 days we'll begin construction on that water line upgrade out in the south part of the county. We completed or helped the Middle Tennessee Industrial Development Association complete a wage and benefit survey. This was about a 40-county region where they surveyed wages, benefits, what people are getting paid in different sectors. These types of studies are important for new industries and existing industries to know what their competition is paying. So anyone that participated, any of our manufacturers that participated in this have access to that data. So that helps their HR department know who they're competing with for employees. We've just recently completed and submitted a TVA Invest Prep Grant. That's a grant program that TVA offers communities to enhance their industrial sites. We've proposed building a 100,000 square foot pad with 50,000 square feet gravel. That just makes it a little bit easier for a company to come in and go from a greenfield site on to having a building. This pad will be designed, definitely be expanded to 200,000 square feet, and we will know probably in the next four months whether that happens. But that's something that we see as the next step towards, moving towards a spec building. Our plan is to ultimately build a 50,000 square foot building, and this pad has been designed to accommodate that and will help reduce the cost eventually for the spec building by going ahead and doing the site work and the drainage work. So that's in the works. We began funding the spec building program, the ID Board set aside $25,000 in a reserve account just for that project, and we'll continue to add to that as funds are available. We're working with Tennessee Economic Partnership, which is a statewide organization that's involved with marketing the state of Tennessee, is a good place to do business. This is our first year working with them. We've got some visits coming up, we're going to go to Chicago, I believe, on a key market visit and talk to site consultants up there about bringing business to Tennessee and Fintress County. We're also looking at going down to Savannah to a manufacturer's trade meeting that will be held down there, so we're working on that. Obviously, 127, there's been a lot of talk about that and some meetings lately, we're involved with that. Just last week, the Assistant Commissioner for Rural Development with ECD, Amy New, was in Cookville on her listening tour, and we attended that meeting as well as LeAnn from the Chamber of League, she was there. And then upcoming, in the next, well, we've got three months, starting in April, we're going to be doing some economic development training that we're going to invite all of you guys to, plus the city officials from Allard and Jamestown. We're going to hold those here in the courthouse over in the Economic and Community Development Room, and you can see the dates and times for those. So we've been busy, got a lot going on, and appreciate y'all's continued support. Anybody got any questions?
Thank you, Scott, appreciate it.
Thank y'all.
During our earlier work session, the decision made, I guess, that three of the items on our agenda that we're not going to address tonight, numbers nine, 17, and 18, and I'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda for those items, please.
So moved.
I have a motion to amend number nine, 17, and 18, have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Anyone wish to speak to the motion? Roll call vote please.
Jim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
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 Against.
Four.
Nine-four-one against, motion passes. Next on the agenda, number 10, consideration of resolution 201-8-04, authorizing the submission of the Tennessee Highway Safety Office Grant for the application year of 2018-2019. Yes, sir.
Eevee folks, this grant is the same one we applied for, this will be the sixth year that we've applied for this grant, it's going to be the alcohol enforcement grant once again. After speaking to the Highway Safety Office, it appears that they're going to offer about the same amount of funding they offered this last year. This last year, we've received about $10,000, that's 100% grant, nothing required from the county, so I just need permission of the council to go forward with applying.
I'll entertain a motion to that effect.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Larry.
Four.
Way.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Ten-four-nine against.
Motion passes, appreciate it, thank you. Number 11, consideration of a resolution 201-8-05, authorizing the submission of the Walmart Community Grant Application for the grant year 2018, and authorizing the acceptance of said grant.
This grant is one that's offered by the Walmart Corporation. It's a community-related grant, it's open to law enforcement agencies and other public service groups. It's going to be for, it can be used for training or equipment, and the amount that I'm asking for is going to be $5,000. Like I said, that can be used for either training or equipment that we can use better opportunities, and I just need the commission's approval to go forward with applying for this grant.
I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
I have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Benny.
Four.
Don.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Way.
Four.
Four.
Ten-four-nine against, motion passes. We appreciate y'all's hard work and your dedication, and in particular, the pursues of the grants, grant money are kind of lifeblood for our county, distressed county. Bringing that in, especially when you get one with no matches, is a great addition, and so we applaud y'all's determination and professionalism and dedication to the county. Next on the agenda is a consideration of a resolution 201-8-06 to oppose the Senate and House Bill SB 706 and HB 1153 to increase the election coordinator's salary. Anyone want to address that?
I think this bill would put, if passed, would put an undue burden on the smaller counties such as Fintress County. The more populous counties, you know, they certainly probably have a larger workload than we do here, but I just, I don't see the state mandating us to increase that salary for the population that we have here in Fintress County.
Any further comments? I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Have a motion to pass resolution 201-8-06, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, is there any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jake.
Four.
Ben.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Ten-four-nine against, motion passes. Number 13, consideration of approval of the elevator maintenance contract for Fintress County Courthouse. Folks, you've got two choices there, we talked about them in the work session. I will say that over the years, our contract with Otis Elevator has been somewhat unsatisfactory, the work and the cost and everything has been, it could have been much better than it has been. So I'll let you all look at that and make a decision.
If you look at the amounts that were presented, United Elevator, which is actually coming in at a cheaper rate, the $1,200 for the test versus $1,380 for Otis, and then the full maintenance contract with United is $2,100 versus $2,340 from Otis, and based on the past expenses you've had with Otis Elevator, I make the motion we go with United Elevator with the full maintenance because that's going to cover all the parts and repairs, which in turn looks like it's probably going to save us money.
Okay, I have a motion to go with United, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
And I think that is a five-year contract.
That is a five-year contract, yes, sir. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call vote please.
Jim.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jake.
Four.
Ben.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Motion passes. Next, we have consideration of approval of the agreement for the sheriff's employees that will be attending the academy. And this agreement basically says that they will, they're agreed to be employed by Fintress County for a particular period of time. If they don't, they repay a portion or all of the money that we paid to send them to the academy. Any other questions or any other clarifications for that?
Mike, I want to jump in there and say that be certain that we all understand that we are not creating an employment contract with them, we are creating an agreement that we will prepay their training costs at the academy, that it's something they could do on their own if they so choose to do, but we're agreeing to prepay that for them. Not a wage, we're not setting up any kind of employment contract per se, but what we're telling them is, we'll prepay your training, and you can see the portions of it, it breaks down between the months, if they leave of their own voluntary termination, meaning they decide to quit and go to work elsewhere or not work in the field any longer. We've not wasted our money in the prepaying of their training. It's going to be on the record very clearly, we're not binding them in any other way other than to pay us back for their prepayment of the training.
Right. Question?
Move to approve the agreement.
Have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Hear the comments? Questions? Roll call vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jake.
Four.
Ben.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Motion passes. Next is consideration of approval of the Fintress County mowing proposals. And folks, I think you've got two of them there. One from Stardust Lawn Service for $645 per mow, and one from Owens Lawn Care for $590 per mow. And those include the Kirby Johnson Field and the South Fintress Community Park and the Clark Range EMS Building.
I move we go with the lower bid.
Motion to accept the lower bid, which is Owens Lawn Care. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote please.
If I'm, I was hesitant, but nothing against Stardust Lawn Service, they've done an excellent job, you know, and I think they probably did this for three years, but here we can save the county some money, and I think we just got to look at it not as being dissatisfied with Stardust Lawn Service, you know, that we're not at all, they've done an excellent job. But we've got to look out for the best interest of the taxpayer dollars, and here's one instance that we can.
And to add to that, because we, I feel like we've created an environment, we're not getting as many bids. Last year, I think we had six proposed bids that came in, this year we have two. So if we set an environment where we're not going to be competitive and we're not going to look at the lower bids, you know, we want to consider everything, but I think we've set ourselves up with an environment where it looks like we're not considering that. So we definitely want to consider every aspect, and again, that's why, we want to keep it competitive, you know, we have to run the county like you would a business, and that's what we're here to do.
Any other comments? Roll call vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jake.
Four.
Ben.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is consideration of the Tennessee Department of Transportation's offer for the acquisition of the Clark Range Fire Hall and the Clark Range Convenience Center. As I told you all at work session, I met with Jason Arnold, right-of-way acquisition person for TDOT today for about an hour. They had made an offer before and we had discussed it somewhat, for them to make everything, land, the compactor, everything, at the convenience center and all the way out there in the Clark Range area, the offer was $183,900. If Fintress County opts to keep the land, which I would suggest that we do that, and the compactor, the compactor's estimated value is $76,500. For 10% of that, $7,650, we can retain that and use it further. It's in good shape. Solid Waste Director Jackie Selby expressed his desire to me that we do keep that, so the formalized agreement that they've offered is $176,250 to relocate both the fire hall and the convenience center. And discussing that with TDOT and TDOT's right-of-way officials, they've informed me that if we appealed this offer, that there's a chance that we could get another $10,000, $1,500, maybe even $17,000 on top of that. It would prolong the process somewhat, but I don't think that we are in any real hurry to jump into something, especially when we don't know the exact construction date to begin with. So my suggestion is that you give me the okay to appeal the decision and ask for the higher amount.
I would, I'd make a motion to appeal this decision and also negotiate continued use of the existing fire hall and convenience site until such time we know the road's going to be built and, you know, maybe up until 90 days prior to construction of the road.
I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
Mr. Proff, I want to be sure that you're going to appeal it, that you do so in writing, give them a formal appeal. I know there's not necessarily a form that you fill out or review, but they are specifically asking that you do these in writing, that way they're the record, so they can take to their next level.
Right. Any other questions or comments? Roll call vote please.
Four.
Justin.
Four.
Jake.
Four.
Lester.
Four.
Jeff.
Four.
Don.
Four.
Larry.
Four.
Ten-four-nine against, motion passes. Next is a proposed bill, SB 1905 and HB 1921, requiring newly elected and appointed county commissioners who take office on or after September 17. who take office on or after September the 1st, 2018, to complete annual training. There's been some discussion about that from both sides of the aisle with commissioners. Commissioners, what are your wishes?
I move to oppose this bill simply because I don't want to see it as a deterrent for other qualified people that would want to run for commissioner of Fentress County.
And that's in the form of a motion. Do I have a motion to oppose?
And I would second that motion because it wasn't required of us to sit in this chair tonight. So why would we require anyone else in this county to do any other different than what we've done?
Okay, have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Barring discussion, roll call vote, please.
Larry.
Fuller.
Wade.
Fuller.
Benny.
Fuller.
Donald.
Ford.
Jimmy.
Fuller.
Justin.
Ford.
JP.
Fuller.
Kim.
Against.
Lester.
Against.
Jeff.
Ford.
Eight-four to against, motion passes.
And I'd like to add to those in opposition of this, I certainly understand. We want the most educated, most informed people serving as commissioners, but to mandate what they must do after getting elected that we didn't have to go through, you know.
And I agree, that's a flaw in it. I think it should be required of anybody sitting at the table, whether you were elected 20 years ago or elected, you know, this fall. I think, again, we had this discussion, the learning curve is high when you sit down at this table. There's so much information you have to get. So we've learned, we've had on-the-job training, which has been great and good, but, you know, I think the fact that you would do some online or maybe in classroom training would be good. And so that's why I voted against. I think it's not put together as I would like it. I think it should be all-inclusive. You should just train across the board. So, but I'm not against training.
And this bill hasn't been passed in the House yet. If it does, we'd probably have to go anyway.
Any other comments? Moving along, we have a couple of budget amendments. We have one for the county clerk, $1,280 for a part-time employee for a four-week period. Marilyn, you want to say anything about that? Or does everybody understand that, ready to vote?
Down employee in her office for an undisclosed time. Instead of doing it for maybe a whole big lump sum, what we've done, Marilyn, is we've done it for four weeks when we come back in April. If this person is still gone, you've got enough more money to cover some more weeks. What we decided to do is just do from now till the next commission meeting, and then if that person's not back, look at doing something else. And what she's asking for is $1,280, which is in her budget. This is not coming from fund balance, removing some line items, and this will cover her through the next meeting in April.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Jimmy.
Four.
Justin.
Ford.
JP.
Ford.
Kim.
Fuller.
Benny.
Fuller.
Donald.
Ford.
Lester.
Fuller.
Jim.
Ford.
Larry.
Fuller.
Wade.
Fuller.
Motion passes, and I think we've got one for the sheriff's department. Good afternoon, Sheriff Reagan.
How are you, Bob?
Good.
For the SROs, the money for from now till the end of the fiscal year, which would be June 30th, was $54,932.50. That's to send to the academy and stuff. Got two going to academy starting the 9th of April and one going to, starting April 1st as a deputy. I've got enough money except $18,253.95 to have enough money to do all that. I've spent this past week, I spent $7,200 on tasers, guns, radio, and body cameras for the new ones that's coming to work. So I need, you know, we're going to put, this is four, six SRO officers. We've got two in the schools now, and this will be for four more to get, where we have one in each school. I really think it's too much to ask for, you know, to keep the kids of Fentress County safe.
So what you're asking for, for Fentress County Government,
Yeah, that's the finish after the fiscal year. The total amount's $54,932.50.
Well, before we act, I want to say that we've been in meetings with the sheriff's department, Board of Ed, York Institute, city police, city Valer, city Jamestown. I think everybody is on board that there is a commitment from all of us for the safety of our kids in the schools. This, I think, is a critical time, and I appreciate the hard work, the dedication and everything that everybody has put forth. And Sheriff Reagan, I know that you've done a great job in heading this up and looking at it and trying to analyze it and put together all the logistics and things of that nature. So it's been a, been a big effort. But again, it's something I think critically important to Fentress County and to the safety of our schoolchildren, our teachers and administrators.
And I might add too, if, you know, if y'all pass it to come Monday, whenever they go back to school, I'm going to have, I'm going to have an officer in each school. I may be a little short-handed on the road, but I mean, we're going to try to work it out for you, kind of take care of it, but there will be an officer in each school.
I move to approve.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
I would, if you wouldn't mind. As you said, we've met several times with every agency. In order for this to happen now, we've got commitments from the Board of Education, like Mike said, and some other agencies that wants to help. But for this to happen now, we have to do this now. It's our responsibility to help out where we can, and I think this is a step in the right direction. I think by the time August gets here, we're going to have some funding in place that's not going to cost the county, but maybe one full-time salary. And I think this is the right move to make.
Any other comments?
I got a question for the sheriff. And I don't mean to put you on the spot.
Put him on the spot, Benny.
Okay, I'll put you on the spot. My question is, if there is a problem, a threat to a school, will the SRO officer intercept and try his best to stop the threat? Absolutely. That's all I need to know. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Jeff?
We've got verbal commitments of municipalities and school boards and so on that say, you know, we'll pitch in and help. But we don't know how much that is.
No, we don't. And they've told us from day one that they needed to see the numbers, and then they've got to go back and have their meetings and discuss it.
Since we have the numbers tonight, and we haven't been able to give them the numbers yet, is it possible that we can recess here tonight and present those numbers and let them say, yes, we're going to fund this many dollars so we're not surprised and, you know, have to foot 90% of the bill?
I'll respond to what Larry said. I think from now until school starts, they will have ample time to see that we've made that commitment. We've got the officers in there. Sheriff's Department has trained officers in the schools. They'll give them some time. We take care of it right now for the $18,000.
I'll agree with you, Jeff, that we probably need something in writing to, you know, to back up what they say they're going to do. But however, these other agencies are not going to meet before Monday night. So their respective city council, Board of Education committee members can't vote between now and Monday night to come to, back to us by Monday night. So we're at an advantage that we get to be here tonight, but they don't meet again until next month. So, and school starts back next Monday. So, you know, I think that, you know, we've had numerous meetings that's recorded, that people went on record, you know. I think that would look bad, and I don't think they want to look bad. But, you know, we're meeting tonight and we'll meet again, hopefully, next Monday night. But these other agencies can't meet before then, so.
Any other questions or comments?
For our attorney. The SRO officers.
Whereas if it were open, right, deputy line item, then you would pay. That's why the SROs have a special designation. Because typically, in every other jurisdiction that we've looked at, those SROs are funded primarily by the county and the sheriff's budgets in most counties. But there's a lot of counties who have city schools who fund them through their city school system. Like our city contributes with a portion of the sales tax. I can wish to tell someone about that. But as far as for the SRO contribution, most of the time they do a once-a-year, a budgeted agreement. And then you do a number of understandings, like a contract. And what we've seen is that most jurisdictions do either in payments or they do monthly payments and funding that salaries. And maybe not even the entire salary. It just depends on what they can afford. That's called security. Those are what may always be, you know, protection there. And already, and already contributing to the man who's on security. This is called security personnel. We need to remember that, which is not the wrong use of it. Most people are supposed to, so they're near. For security purposes, they'll be the first line of defense and be your vertical incident responder. Just like the sheriff said, they'll have a lot of people who are in control there, unless they need. But they are not the persons who make sure you're in this block all the time. It's something that would be more of a, a higher security. That's different. These are resource officers. They've been represented, relationship building. Now, now, the traffic lights are, they'll have a response to that. They all, they all have education with kids. There's a line, anti-buying, front, they're all front of the scene. They're all the brothers, and they're probably other things that they are sort of fighting for. Yeah, comments? Roll call. Yeah, comments? Roll call. Four. Five. Four. Motion passes. Sheriff Reagan, yes, sir. I'm looking for, I'm looking for, I'm looking for, I'm looking for. They're black, they're red, they're white. And it's not, it's not showing, like, what I'm looking for. I'm looking for, I'm looking for. I know, I see, I don't know, Jen, you know, folks are giving. I think the work committee, uh, meeting this afternoon is going to give us an update. Yes, we've been waiting over the last month several times to try to come up with some ideas of how we might proceed with the land that we've acquired to hopefully develop a recreation area for all ages in the county. And we hit a few hurdles today that we need to get past. We need some totals and some numbers. And so what I'm going to ask, we're giving everyone to the end of the week to get those submitted that we reconvene on Monday night with those to the weekend. There's agreements available for us at club. We need to know how we can proceed with that. And that being said, we did a brilliant survey, sent out to the schoolchildren to give response to see how well this would be received. We're not going at this blindly, depending on opposition, but we're going to see what the general consensus was. And overwhelmingly, the community is supportive as trying to develop this complex for, like I said, it's, it's, yes, it's going to be new complex, but there's definitely going to be parts that it's going to be used by every age, you know. You can have to walk and train. And again, I think it would be kind of a purpose building later on. This is not going to be a huge project that we can go at all the time. It would actually be phases with the police team and the people in the county. Everyone make the county better, we know. And anybody, right, Lisa. That being said, I just think we're going to have to break that down.
And then I have one more thing.
Then go ahead.
Okay.
You have your one more thing.
Okay, I have one more thing. Just wanted to announce, it's not really commission-related. I volunteer a lot of volunteer work for the Fentress Hope Foundation. I don't know if y'all know that, I'm not going to go into that much. But anyways, we have been able to secure a RAM clinic for Fentress County in September of this year. It's remote area medical. They will come in, they're going to be here on September 8th and 9th. They bring in doctors, dentists, eye doctors. I went and visited the clinic they had in Coolville this past weekend. It is overwhelming. I mean, several times I was in tears to see what they were doing. They don't ask questions about your income. You know, if you don't even want to show them an ID, you don't have to. It's an opportunity for people here in this county that have not had dental care. They were telling, they had had a gentleman, they had pulled every tooth in his head. They were that bad. You know, for years, he'd not been able to afford to go to dentist. They were making eyeglasses that day. They were going to have 300 pair of eyeglasses that went out. And again, this is free. This is for the people here in this community. So just overwhelmed that we were able. It generally takes several years to even get them to come here, but with a lot of prayer, we were able to, like I said, to get them here in September. It's just overwhelming. So this is my presentation to people in the county. We need volunteers. We will need volunteers. volunteers, we'll need churches to feed these people and some different things, but, but again, I just wanted everybody to be aware of it, we talk about, there's so much here going on in the county, and, you know, worried about nickels and dimes and everything, but I thought this was just a phenomenal thing that's gonna come into the county without any cost.
Thank you Kim.
You're welcome.
Anything else bring before this commission?
I want to say something on the part about the mowing. Somebody made a statement that the reason why you wasn't getting no bids, no bidders on it, is because, I own a mowing business, I've been in business now for five years, it costs a lot of money to run them machines, and you've got these young guys that's coming up, that's coming out of school, and they're, they're, all they're doing is going down there and bidding, putting a bid in on these jobs that comes open in the newspaper. They're not going out there walking these places or looking at anything. I know for a fact, because I've stood right over there at the office and talked to several of them, I used to put in on the county bids, that's why I know, is the reason why no bids has been put in is because all this undercutting, you know, I can't do it for that, that's why I didn't put in for it this time. And these younger guys, Andrew Starr has done a great job the last several years that he's done it, but I even noticed last year that, that he kinda got behind too, because one of his mowers messed up. Do you ever go back and look at these fellers' history and see how long they've been mowing, or see any of the work that they've done? I don't know the guy that got it, and I'm not down, he may be one of the greatest lawn mower guys that there was, I'm not saying that, but it's gonna cost the county double what he put a bid in on, if that grass gets about that high, and for anybody going there with another mower to start mowing, anybody knows that, the common sense, because I'm not gonna put my mower in knee-high grass for no $250. And I do my own maintenance, I don't know if these younger guys knows how to work on these things or not, but there's a lot of things that we took in, infrastructure with this stuff, whenever, whenever these bids are put out, I think they ought to be, they ought to be checked, and they ought, some of the commissioners need to go out and look and see it, some of these guys, see what kind of work they've done, and then go that way about the bid. I agree with taking, taking the lowest bid, because I'd want to save the county all the money I can, or could, and you guys have done, have done an awesome job at your job. But I'm telling you, it's gonna cost you twice that much if you gotta have a guy going there and clean that mess up, when you got one of these younger guys comes in, he don't know what he's doing, and then when he figures out, hey, I bid too long, and this, I can't make no money out of it, and he pulls up and he leaves, because I've seen it happen a lot of times. I know, I've cleaned several places up, for three times what the fan that gathered was mowing. So that's why I'm saying, they need to, somebody needs to be going out and doing a background check on these guys that's put these bids in, and getting the pain scale back up where it needs to be on the mowing, and then you get a lot more people put in on these bids tomorrow. You know, I wish I could mow it for nothing. I know there was a statement made several years ago, well, I'm gonna save the county some money, and I'm gonna do this, and turn it around, it cost the county about three times what he was, what he was gonna save them, so, but that's just what I want to say, I wasn't gonna say anything, but I'm a mowing man, and I know nobody else has put bids in on it, because you can't compete with these young guys, and 99.9% of the time, he's not gonna finish the job, you're gonna have to get somebody to take his place anyway, because it's happened time and time again in the past, anybody knows it's had anything to do with the county, and I'd whole lot rather go through and see, one about that high is, go through and see it about waist-high, where you can't even walk it, but that's what's gonna happen if we're not careful, because you're gonna get to the point where nobody's gonna put bids in on anything, because nobody's checking to see and make sure what's going on.
Thank you Lee.
You're welcome.
Anything else bring before this commission? Yes ma'am.
May I speak?
Be brief, thank you.
My name is Emma Legg, and I am here for the fourth time, standing up for justice, truth, and the law. Because of this board's 2016 refusal to uphold our laws, this board and Executive Cross condoned illegal acts made by two dishonest men who blatantly violated our laws for their own selfish greed. Since this board did not believe my 2016 reports, nor neighbors' photographs that reveal water forced to drain on top of our road surface due to Butch Blevins' illegal blockages, therefore, this board must hire a civil engineer to study our three natural waterways. The responsibility and care of our roads is our road supervisor's duty, and this includes keeping water off county road surfaces, and to remove obstructions according to Tennessee law. But not even a 2016 petition of all our homeowners was enough to get obstructions removed, and this proves Scott Norris intends for them to remain, because if removed, our only ditch will overflow onto my lawn in the second natural waterway. But since this water is from the first waterway, Norris' obstructions are illegal, and also equal diversion that amounts to the taking of my land, which violates our Fifth Amendment, thus Norris abused the powers of the Office of County Road Supervisor. This board needs to know, these three obstructions were made after Norris took office to cover up our inadequate drainage, and if Norris had not sanctioned them, why and how could our neighbor have made them? In 2005, Blevins built his illegal tar and chip levee purposely to cover up our developers' illegal diversion of water from the first waterway through the second waterway. But Blevins wasted taxpayers' money and violated our laws and civil rights. Thereby, Blevins abused the powers of the Office of County Road Supervisor. The amount of tar and chip Blevins wasted was more than enough to have tarred and chipped our entire cul-de-sac more than two times. Therefore, Blevins betrayed the public trust. For Blevins to have wasted all that tar and chip for his levee and not ever tarred and chipped our cul-de-sac is unfair and unequal under our Fourteenth Amendment, because Skyline Drive homeowners must be treated equal as any other homeowner in Fentress County would be. Blevins' illegal acts are detriments which result in loss of value to Skyline Drive homeowners, because Tennessee real estate laws require disclosure of all detriments to buyers. This puts Skyline Drive homeowners at an unfair disadvantage compared to all other homeowners in Fentress County, and this violates our Fourteenth Amendment also. Our voters elected this board to represent our citizens, but not to condone lawlessness, nor to connive behind closed doors with Executive Cross, who used the powers of his office to influence your decision with his untrue statements at 2016 meetings, which showed Cross does not have the best interest at heart for our citizens by ignoring our laws and civil rights, which is abuse of powers of the Office of County Executive. And a few of Cross's untrue statements are, that the college that trains road supervisors told Cross, Fentress County has no responsibility regarding Skyline Drive's drainage, that our county attorney's opinion was, that Fentress County has no duty to correct Skyline Drive drainage, that Fentress County does not have money to do anything for Skyline Drive. Did this board really believe Cross's statements? And if you did, you must believe all elected officials can violate our laws as they so please. Does this board not know you have powers to see that officials do not betray the public trust? And you must exercise these powers to fulfill your duties, but if you do not, you are betraying the public trust, and you become co-conspirators and are derelict in your duty. Due to this board's condoning illegal acts, offers my neighbor and, my neighbors and I intended to make to pay for two culverts were not made in 2016, but if this board fulfills your duties, we will make our offers thereafter. I have been told, our third previous road supervisor had his hand in the pocket of our developer, hence the reason we have zero culverts and only one ditch. Our previous road supervisor had his hand in our developer's pocket, hence the reason why we have seven illegal levee alterations.
Ma'am.
And even our developer had his hand in the pocket of landowners to the north, hence the reason we have developed, the developer's diversion of water from the first waterway through the second waterway for the sole purpose of giving greater value to the richest property on Model Farm Road.
Ma'am, as entertaining as your act of fiction is, I'm gonna accept the motion to recess until next Monday night. Recession.